And I now turn the program over to Steve Lobster, who will introduce our moderator.
Thank you, Larry. If you would like to submit a question for consideration to be asked at the end of the formal question and answer session, Dale and a couple other guys are milling about in the room. If you'd like a card and something directly to submit a question, please do so. We'll begin to take those and have time permitted, two to four audience questions at the end of the formal session. Our rules tonight are very basic and common sense, few and far between. Ask you to silence your cell phones if you would. And our overriding principle is please be respectful to the candidates and their answers. Allow each candidate to finish. Please signify your approval with your strength so we can stay on schedule tonight. I know that this is a very passionate campaign on both sides, but let's allow these candidates to develop their ideas and speak freely. There are eight predetermined questions tonight. One of them is a two-part question. There will be no opening statement. There will be opposing statements from each candidate. The answer period runs closely around two and a half minutes. There's a couple that are two-minute, there'll be a three-minute closing, and one of the questions will give the candidates an opportunity for a one-minute rebuttal. All eight questions, a committee from among the members of the Rotary Club will submit to the candidates some of the selected audience questions. And Larry mentioned I was supposed to introduce the moderator. Everybody knows Bob Jensen. He's heart and soul of the history of this community and knows far more about where we've been and how we got to where we are today than any meeting we've had here for generations. And as Larry said, truly one of the social and political conscience of this community. And he and Vina have been an integral part of the building and maintained and favored this community for 34 years. And as the club looked around the community to choose a moderator, it always came back to Bob, who can be viewed as even keeled and nonpartisan and the right person to ask the questions. A quick note about the questions. They've been generated from suggestions from among the members of the Rotary Club of Homestead, vetted by a committee, and formulated over the last couple of weeks to down to the eight questions we have tonight. So with that, I'll take my seat with Bob. We'll start the question and answer session. Again, the after club and the community, thank you all for being here.
Thank you, Steve. On question number one, in the two and a half minutes, Ms. Bell will answer first, Ms. Levine Kava second. What is it that you believe makes you the more qualified candidate?
Thank you for that question. By the way, thank you everybody for coming out there tonight. I've been serving the government for 10 years now, and I've been serving as a county commissioner for four years. And so it's what you see is what you get. When I made promises many years ago, four years ago specifically, I have fulfilled so many of those promises that I have more to go. I brought ethics reform to Miami-Dade County, lobbying reform. I have worked very hard in front of jobs, kept taxes low. I passed, when I found out that people were having to pay jury parking, I passed legislation to outlaw jury parking. Term limits. Nobody has been able to get term limits done in the entire history of this county. I sponsored, spearheaded and sponsored term limits, and we now have term limits where people can only serve for eight years. That's a big difference. Ethics training. Every single county employee, every single lobbyist that does business with Miami-Dade County will now have to take ethics training. I sponsored to put the checkbook online, the budget online. You know, just problem fixer. Worked very hard with our parks department. And you know what? It's not just about good legislation. I've worked very hard with the agriculture community and I'm very appreciative to the Farm Bureau of Miami-Dade County Farm Bureau. And you know, one of the first things I did when I got here was when I found out that people had to go all the way downtown Miami for basic services, I fought to return those services to South Dade. And right now, at the South Dade Government Center, we have services where you don't have to go all the way downtown Miami to do many of the things that you had to do before. So it's about working. It's about being proactive. It's not just about being reactive. It's about caring. It's about caring for our community. And I have been just so delighted with the feedback that I've gotten as I knock on the doors and people say, "Thank you Commissioner Bell. Thank you, they don't have to pay for jury parking anymore." As a matter of fact, I expanded it so that it's not just parking, free parking when you get downtown to go to jury duty. It's free parking at any veteran rail station that you choose to go drive and park your car in. And you know, on the return services to South Dade, I just got the numbers in. We served 10,000 people this year alone, 12,000 last year. In the first year, which was a part of the year, we had served over 4,000 people. That's that many less cars on the road going downtown Miami. And there's so much more with legislation that I've done. And I think it's just about caring. We have a committed commissioner who cares. And by the way, I love being in my hometown, Danielle Lovey of Homestead. It's a great place to live. It's a great place to be. And 35 years is wonderful to live right here in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much for this invitation, for this opportunity, and thank you to everyone for coming out to be informed about the government entity action. I have 30 years plus service in Miami-Dade County, and many before as a social worker and as a lawyer, always working to build stronger communities and help families to survive and thrive. So my whole history has been about making conditions better for everyday people, for building a community that we're proud of, for building good opportunities for jobs, economic advancement, and greater equal opportunity across the board. I know as a rage builder, as a consensus builder, and have worked across the aisle. I'm passionate about good governance. I've been fighting all these years to help people get more involved in our policy so that we can be proud of our government and be more accountable. That's the new power to elect a new office. But that, that I'm able to run this race and be as formidable as I am at this point, this has to do with my direct service, the strike and the networks that I've built. Truly, there's a coalition of people supporting me. Every day that I walk in the neighborhood, I meet people who know me from previous work at the local services, the greater running, guarding and lighting of the area, and foster care system, starting several nonprofits, Voices for Children Foundation, We Care, which I helped start in Miami-Dade County as a store. I have worked in South Dade, after Hurricane Andrew, to help the children who were scattered, the foster community scattered due to the storm. I've worked in Baptist Hospital to bring healthcare to the underinsured and underinsured in Miami-Dade County. I have the ability to analyze complex problems and bring common sense solutions and build win-win solutions like I did when I was a public analyst in Miami with the Prosperity Campaign, which was a business, public-private partnership, and helped to grow the standard of living for thousands and thousands of Miami-Dade residents to bring millions of dollars into the community to spur good economic development. So for the reasons of my background, for my passion, my history, my innovation, and results, I'm going to change and restore consciousness around that.
Thank you. Let's be respectful to the candidates and the answers. Let's use our time to learn more about the candidates. Question number two, two and a half minutes. Ms. Levine Kava will answer first, and Ms. Bell will answer second. On many issues specific to a district, other commissioners often defer the views of the commissioner for that particular district. What is your history and experience in this district?
I've had an opportunity, as I mentioned before, to long, very extensive Miami District Day. First of all, I've lived in Miami-Dade County going on 31 years. And in that time, I spent quite a little time in the district, in Redmond, and joined the wonderful agricultural sector for Spice Park. I've spent a lot of time in the other places. That's our favorite vacation. I've grown, my children grew up, had a little bit of a relationship with the progress waterway many times. I have now to do work with Baptists, help, as I mentioned, to bring healthcare access to particularly the people of this district, and to work extensively with the foster care system, which I ran for a time, and helped out Hurricane Andrew. As well, the local services that I work with children in this district, to keep them within range of, to focus on the issues of educational assistance and help them to obtain the educational services they need to comply. I'm really looking forward to partnering in South Dade with Commissioner Moss to develop a South Dade strategy that will cut across the entire South Dade district. People in this district feel forgotten. They feel that they don't get their fair share of the county government. Again, I'm a collaborator. I know all the commissioners personally. I have a history of working with many, for many, many years. And I know they trust that our person has been terribly remembered, and I respect and honor them as we together work on improving candidate awareness.
You know, I've been hearing Ms. Kava saying about people feel forgotten, people feel forgotten. And I think that's so interesting because that's so insulting to Commissioner Moss and to Commissioner Sorsete because Moss has been there for 20 years and Commissioner Sorsete has been there for 16 years. So basically, they're saying that Commissioner Moss and Commissioner Sorsete did do a very good job because you certainly can't just be forgotten four years. So I think that that's kind of a slight to them. And you know, when I hear these words about, "Don't get your fair share," I think fair share of what? Other people's money? Or what specifically about fair share? I've been fighting for this district. By the way, I've been fighting, I've been living here for 35 years. Not just visiting, but living here. And you know, I've spent so much time in these parks here, and I've never seen one of them. And I've spent so much time in through Spice Park. I've sponsored everything that's been out there. And part of it is, I sat there, when they do defer to the commissioner of the district is because they know that that commissioner knows the needs of their district. They know that that commissioner knows that district like nobody else. So you know what? When we had, when I was sponsoring lots of agriculture legislation because the county wasn't very hostile towards the farming community, and I was able to resource funding to IFLS. I was able to resource funding and make sure that we still had an ag manager when it was being threatened. They respected me because I lived here. When I said, "You can't do that." That's a multi-billion dollar industry. When I fought for the manager to fight the law and to have scientists to study the laurel beetle that was affecting our avocado row and our crops, they respected me on that because I was the commissioner of the district who actually lives here. So that makes a big difference. So not only do I live here, I live in this district, I live in this town, and I know it, and I know the needs. And you know what? When I see a need in the community, I feel that need. When I, we just did a farm chair event just about week ago, Saturday, and let me tell you, we fed about 3,000 people. Wasn't accomplished in that feeding. And let me tell you, unfortunately, my opponent tried to sabotage that event, which I found to be very sad. But the bottom line is, is that after only two years on that commission, I was voted to be the vice chairman of the board of the county commissioners because of my ability to work with everybody, because of being a great consensus builder, because of being complimentary to my colleagues and recognizing the great work that they've been able to do. So yes, they respect the commission of the district and this commissioner specifically because they know I live here. Thank you.
Question three, two and a half minutes. Current budget issue discussions seem to be focused on county employee salaries, benefits, and pensions, which must be dealt with on a larger scale. What is your position on these issues?
We have a standing county workforce. We have many people who've worked for many, many years and not hire a lot of new people. So most of our employees are long-term employees who are deeply committed to their jobs. It's a very complex county system, many departments, very diverse, and most of the employees are hired by union contracts. Those contracts are negotiated with great agreements on both sides. At this time, we have some contracts that need to be honored for this contract here. Next year, there'll be negotiations. I'm sure we have opportunities for new ideas to be presented. Maybe there'll be concessions once again proposed and accepted. But at this time, we have, it's simply a false choice to say that we can accept new concessions from the unions. It's not legally or it's just gonna be, it's impossibility. So at this time, the budget has been presented that will require us to lay off many of the people on the union line for our first, our first responders for these firefighters who are having to close up some essential release units like our channel recently, sex trafficking, and just one of these problems. It's urgent. In the fire services area, we had this tragedy a couple of weeks ago on the water. And you know, who could say what would have happened? We have a fire boat, but tragically, we didn't have a fire boat. Our lighter isn't safe, but just by a heater, you're stored to the current levels, but not to the prior level. We had nationally recognized, honored library system with programs that have been added, and the new proposal will not restore those programs. So every choice is a critical choice for quality initiatives here in the county. There are certain things in the budget, for example, discretionary dollars that each commissioner has and that Miami-Dade uses to create advantage in her campaign, things like gift ads with her name on them, and frisbees, things that every other part of our national or paid for tax dollars. And so those are some of the areas where we need to look whenever they announce the budget instead of doing it on the basis of our county employees who work so hard and need to support the line.
Ms. Bell.
Thank you. Well, let me just inform Ms. Levine Kava that discretionary funds have been gone for four years now. It may, I know you don't feel, I know you don't know that. You have to pay attention to know that. We haven't had discretionary, we haven't had discretionary funds. We haven't had discretionary funds in this county for four years. The commissioner has a budget, and that's it. Discretionary funds were taken away before I ever got there, and I have been there for almost four years now. That's a fact. Discretionary funds are gone, so you might, now you know that. Also, I know you were talking about the budget just last week. At another forum, Ms. Levine said that she couldn't access the budget because she was denied the ability to speak with the budget manager. She was denied that. She deserved it, to speak with the budget director of Miami-Dade County. So I was able to inform her that our budget's online, and anybody in this county can go right online and look. And I know it because I helped sponsor that legislation as well. So you know, this is what happens though, and like or not, we have real governmental experience, and you don't know these things. It is very important to say, to say that it's a false choice to give concessions into the possibility. That's absolutely false. That's a false statement. We have great county employees, absolutely the best. But to say that they cannot get those concessions is absolutely false. That's what we're in negotiation with right now. That's the negotiation discussions right now. So to say it's a impossibility, what? What? How could that be a possibility? Well, we're in budget negotiations right now, and we're in budget negotiations with the unions right now. We have nine bargaining leaders in Miami-Dade County, nine of them. And right now, and by the way, I don't have the authority to lay anybody off. I don't, Ms. Levine, put something out that said I was gonna fire people. I don't have the authority to fire anybody that said I was raising rates. I didn't raise rates. So this constant barrage of things that are being said are just false. By rating in expenditures, by rating in the cost, that's how you save jobs. You can, if you were to rate in the cost and rate in those concessions, you could have more police officers on the street and more firefighters on the street. And I think it's a shame. It's just a darn shame. When we had a tragedy, we had four beautiful young lives lost. To try to use that as a political issue to save the fire boats, when the mayor tried to put the fire boats back at the waters twice, but he was denied by the unions who said, "No, you can't do it. You'll have to use our help and our energy."
Your question with the budget. With the exception of salaries, benefits, and pensions, what in your view are the other areas the county budget could be addressed in order to balance services to a reasonable tax rate?
Absolutely. Good question. You know, there's, because I want you to know this game, this number, 2121. There's 2,121 employees who make all over six figures in this county. There's still fat within our bureaucracy. This needs to be looked at. This needs to be fixed. You know, you can always find some way to trim. I did legislation just three years ago, just to look at deficiencies in the departments. Go in each department, have each department director look at efficiencies and see where you can find those efficiencies. That one directive saved $30 million to the county. Also, procurement, how can we partner on procurement? That's also legislation that I've done. How can we piggyback up off of other contracts? That's something we can look at. Procurement deficiencies, there's so many other things to do that we can do. But let me tell you something, Mr. Jensen and in this audience, you need to know about what's going on with our supplemental pays in this county. 187 different forms of supplemental pays. The base pay is nothing in comparison to supplementals. And those are anything from flex pay, and premium pay, and holiday premium pay. We even have a breathing-in-walking pay. Every employee gets $50 per pay period for showing up. And non-suing PDA get $80 a pay period just for showing up. That's the nonsense that we've got to rate and give it a control. And that's why most of the unions are angry with me because I had the nerve to bring it up and say, "We've got to fix this. We've got to right-size this government, and this is very important in this budget. But we've got to fix this. We've got two bureaucrats making too much money, and I'm absolutely attacking this head-on." Thank you.
Semantics aside, the discretionary dollars in each commissioner's budget is being used for frills, many of which are designed to promote an edge of the commissioner like these giveaways. And the dollars there could be well used to reinvested for essential government services. Procurement. Procurement costs in Miami-Dade are high because of high costs to do business in Miami-Dade because of the grid play system. Lobbyist's ride up the cost here. Famously, many businesses choose not to agree to do business in Miami-Dade because they're told to be successful, they have to hire multiple lobbyists to succeed. And it's been established that if we have minimally, they try politics and we do not allow those to do business for the county and benefit the county in terms of the community to come here. So it would be a game changer in this county if it bring the cost up here in Miami-Dade and reinvest those savings to base that have benefited us and our community. We could also stop giving tax breaks to sports teams, others, and others who we want afford to be their fair share. And supplemental pay is something that commissioners enjoy because the base pay is 6,000, and the supplementals bring it up to over 50,000. So it's not just for the employees who negotiate for supplemental benefits, much of which is for hazardous pay. Sometimes there's overtime because we're not adequate. Staff departments because we're not able to approve expansions in those departments. Overtime costs more. So there is really lack of planning and management that has allowed some of these department costs to go up, and we can rate those in by good planning. So those are the reasons.
Thank you. Two and a half, one second. Ms. Levine Kava first, and Ms. Bell second.
I never settled on my access to budget charter. Whereas, and the budget is online. Budget being online, I said that I, basically the mayor was directing Congress to meet with county officials, and so the budget director meeting is not set. However, having access to the budget online is far and high for being part of a county commission with access to staff and briefings and public participation in the budget. So one of the most fundamental changes that I remain as county commissioner is to open up the budget process. There's a participatory budget process in many cities and many countries that allows people to feel that they're not, right now, we play a shell game with the budget. We take money from fire, libraries, we take money from libraries to fund general operations. We take money from airports, you know, or we try to, to fund general operations. We took money from water, supermans.
Time's up.
Thank you. Semantics aside, again, there's no discretionary funds. Each commissioner has a budget. They pay everything under that budget. My benefits are not called supplementals, they're called benefits. That is my insurance, that's the car allowance, those are things like that. Those are called benefits. Some of the supplementals that we're talking about are good supplementals. I'm not attacking all 187 of them. But I want to also say one other thing. Who here in the 10-year period gets 120% base pay increase? I asked what I thought. Nobody does. From, it's a 10-year period, but the majority came in nine years. The lowest increase from base pay percentage wise up until today, from 12 years ago until today, the lowest percentage of increase in this county was almost 60%. Six zero. And the highest percentage of increase was 120%, and that's our police. And then firefighters are about 84, 85%. I respect our first responders. I respect our employees, but that is not sustainable, my friends. And somebody has to be courageous enough to say that. Now, lack of planning and management, this budget process, the budget is online, what is meeting, meeting after meeting after meeting in the public?
Question number four, two minutes. This one will be answered only by Ms. Levine Kava. What would your primary objective be for your first term in elected?
I'm very concerned about the perception and reality of corruption in our environment. I would work very hard to build consensus about some of the ways that would curtail the influence of the money in our local system. We would look at each pay-to-play in terms of the donations from those who do business with the county. We would look at disclosure of who gives to the county, not just to the county headquarters, but to the political committees. And we would look at increased requirement for disclosure of conflicts of interest. For example, my apartment has, in the last year of February, sponsored an ordinance to allow chain offenses to be in front of homes in Miami-Dade County. She did not acknowledge to the public at any point that her daughter and son owned a company that produced chain offenses that was registered in her home address. This is not permanently restricted by the laws. I think the general perception would be that it should be. So we would try to pass an ordinance, try to get this order from the commissioner to require that kind of disclosure. Furthermore, the CRA funded, I went to purchase the hotel here, Redmond Hotel, 25,000 from CRA dollars. The committee that approved it was presided over my apartment. These sorts of conflicts and practices of conflict will be addressed. Beyond that, we would focus on developing a South Dade economic development plan with Commissioner Bell in partnership, and bring together all chambers, all the economic development planning bodies, and business leaders in the community to look at what can we do together to take advantage of dollars that should flow to us. We're not getting our fair share of economic development dollars in South Dade. Economic Development Council of South Dade has 30,000 proposals to do a baseline study at Miami-Dade Public Center for hosting. My apartment is not lobbying for that. She's not a volunteer.
Question number five, there's two minutes. And Ms. Bell, answer this one only. What do you consider your most significant accomplishments during your first term?
Oh my goodness. I passed so much legislation. You know, just a couple of weeks ago, a few weeks ago, I passed puppy bill legislation. And that's gonna ban, how we do, it's gonna change how we do business in Miami-Dade County and how we buy and sell puppies. So we're on the path to banning all puppy sales from puppy bills. Very proud of that. That's never been done anywhere. I believe we might be the only county in the entire nation that's done that, and that's my legislation. My work with small businesses has been just so profound. We have over 1,900 new businesses in this district in just the past four years. The working with small businesses, my monthly work dates, where I go and I spend time in each and every business and make them feel special so that I understand what they go through in the day-to-day business, in the day-to-day operations of their business. And then I get to promote their business, and then it drives people through their doors. The, my lobbying reform, my ethics reform, putting term limits on the ballot, getting, finally getting Miami-Dade County to pay attention to South Dade and agriculture. And by the way, I'm the one who gave the Economic Development Council their seed money to get them started again, so that you can see that was just mentioned. I'm responsible for their, basically their startup, and the founder, the founder that restored PDC is one of my biggest supporters. So I'm really happy about that. I'm proud of my legislation, by the way, including chain link legislation, because the 500 or so companies, not just one, about 500 or so, and the ethics division was very clear on that, that there was absolutely no conflict. But you know what? That enabled people who couldn't afford to put up a decker fence, people who couldn't afford it, that they can now build a chain link, and they can have safety and security for their families and their children. I'm proud of that. I'm proud of legislation that I did for the guys that wanted to clean pools, who had to be licensed pool contractors just to clean pools. Guess what? They now have their own businesses. They have their own trucks to support their families. I'm proud of that. I'm proud of the level of care and concern that I've shown this district. The fact that I have an open door policy. I'm just so proud of that, that I have listened to the needs of my district.
Sixth question will be two and a half minutes. And Ms. Levine Kava will answer first, and Ms. Bell second. With tourism and agriculture being two of the main economic generators in District Day, what specific elements of your economic and jobs development plan address these two industries?
There's no question that agriculture sector is a treasure, and we need to do more than have the county tolerate it. We need to have the county erase it and invest in it. There has not been significant investment. We do have liaison, that's a wonderful thing, but we haven't yet invested in significant incubation. There's a proposal that's been floated. The mayor has not met, finally with a group to come up with a method for that. And there's tremendous opportunities for good jobs. Our agricultural sector is now really diversified. It's not Our agricultural sector is now really diversified, it's not just the road props that wants to be here, there's the air streams, the fish farming, there's huge opportunity for agritourism and ecotourism, and many people trying to get ahead and those feel, say that there are many barriers at the county level. We don't have a permitting office in South Dade, we don't have a business development office in South Dade. It was promised to put that together into South Dade Government Center. By the way, our commissioner doesn't have her office in South Dade, and instead she spent a quarter million dollars refurbishing and renting the office of Palmetto Bay. So what I would do is invest in real incubation, real small business development, put citizens through, not just the Beefeater Council, but county dollars generally there. The Beefeater Council gets a small percentage of the surcharge that goes to businesses, and we can definitely advocate with the county to put more of those dollars there. As far as tourism, we have the two national parks, we have the wonderful lightway that's connecting them, and we have some really great developments here in Homestead, the historical recognition, this great blaster, and we have some tremendous civic activities in Homestead with bond issuance passed. I know we'll have vibrant downtown, we'll draw lots of new people on their way to take these other ways to the other place, or just plan to come down here and have a good time.
Thank you. We don't have a liaison, we have an ad manager, he's not called a liaison, his name is Charles T. Braden, he's our agriculture manager of Miami-Dade County, and he does a fabulous job. We have a wonderful plan with agriculture, and this has been a very supportive commission. And I would say a lot of it has to do with my bringing it to the radar, letting them know, let them focus on it. You know, agriculture is so key to this community, yet we're besiding the agriculture. We have strict restrictions on farm stands, it's my legislation that was doing those restrictions on farm stands. We couldn't even have, where you, on the weekends, we couldn't even have, where we could go and buy fruit locally, and so now we do. We have very, very liberal legislation now where we can go and buy fruit, vegetables, and have farm stands, and I was very, very proud of that. And you know what? We talked about this incubator that we're talking about, we're talking about an agriculture incubator, and we're talking about the old Relling Farm Life School house right there on Copita Hall on 248th Street. And I actually met with the designers of the original plan, and I sent my chief of staff to New York so that they could take a look at your estate, so they could take a look at that plan and bring it back here and implement that. So I actually am working on the forefront on that as well. You know, I keep hearing my, I say, "Good jobs, good jobs." Well, what's a bad job? You know, I keep hearing, "Good jobs, want good jobs." Well, you know what? Some people might not think farming is a good job. Well, guess what? Put soil tables, a good job. Those guys who are picking pools, that's a good job for them because they're putting food at families' table. Tourism is key, agriculture is key. How many people here know that we produce in this South Dade agriculture area 75% to 8% of the nation's winter vegetables? That's what we do here. But it's not just about work props. And you know what? We have farm workers that reside here all year long now. We have a thriving agriculture community. And let me tell you, I've been the commissioner that has been able to nourish that community, to work with that community, and that's why I received the endorsement of the farm hero, and I'm very, very proud of that. You know, I love the comment really quickly thrown in there about refurbishing my office to a quarter million dollars. My refurbishing of my office, the furniture costs $35,000, so I don't know whether we're getting that kind of money. And you know what? I put the office in the center of my district, right in the middle of my district, and that's where an office should be, so that people from the south and people from the north can access it equally. That's what a good, open-minded responsive commissioner does. They make themselves accessible to everybody. Thank you.
The county has currently holding meetings and making decisions which could lead to the imposition of annexation of unwanted areas to many municipalities in the district, including Homestead. What is your position on annexation and incorporation, with specific thought requiring cities to take in neighborhoods that convert in services and police protection?
That's a fabulous question. As far as that picture, when it comes to annexation and incorporation, they should have the willingness of the residents that are either going to be annexed or incorporated. And when they tried to reduce the requirement all the way down to almost nothing to get signatures in order just to create a study, I said, "That's not right." So we have a 20% signature requirement for anybody that's going to be annexed or anybody that's going to want to incorporate their own cities. But there was one little caveat here. If you're 250 resident electors or less, you have no choice. So I sponsored a legislation that says, "No. If you are a resident of any particular municipality outside a municipality and you're going to be annexed in, you should have a say so." I'm not anti-incorporation, I'm not pro-incorporation, I'm not anti-annexation and pro-annexation. If people want to be incorporated and they want to incorporate and form a pact, they should be allowed to. They should get their signatures, bring it to their district commissioner, have that legislation done to form their pact, and they should be able to do that. If people want to be annexed, they should also be allowed to be annexed. And I remember in Homestead, we did a voluntary annexation of some farmland that they wanted to be annexed. But then again, if they don't want to be annexed, it shouldn't be allowed, and there should be no cherry picking allowed either. And cherry picking is when a municipality picks the choicest area that's going to build up or pad their poppers and kind of leaves out those that don't. And they should never be allowed, you should never be allowed to cherry pick. You shouldn't be able to have this particular area and then carve these people out. That should never be allowed. So they're very firm and very strong. Annexation and incorporation should make sense. But they should also have full disclosure, that people should understand what is going to be the cost to them, what is going to cost them out of their pockets to be annexed or incorporated. You have the right to know that, that's information. So if it's going to cost you X amount of dollars in taxes, you have a right to know that. If you want to be annexed, by all means, you have the right to be annexed. But if you don't want to be annexed, then you have the right not to be annexed. Thank you.
The move to incorporation is one that has grown spontaneously in many areas and one that has proven to be successful for those cities that have incorporated. Some people say there's a plan to fully incorporate the county, but there is no such plan. In the future, there might be, and I think it's important that the county really have a long-term view of what is the plan for deliberative services both to be unincorporated and to be incorporated areas. There are existing rules about incorporation, I would follow those rules. I would require that the residents or the residents to incorporate, to organize themselves, to obtain the necessary support, and to go forward, and I would not put stumbling blocks in their way and change rules on the new street. I know some cities are concerned that they might be required in the future of the area to actually take in certain areas through annexation. So it's not just a matter of whether the residents get to have a say, which of course they should have a say, whether they're annexed. There may even be the reverse that could happen, where cities might be forced to take in certain areas. And I also don't think that we should use incorporation and annexation as a means to force anything out of those existing cities. And in fact, I think that we aren't doing enough to respect and honor these existing cities. There's really not a lot of formal requirement for consultation with cities about decisions at county level. If there's something of a county-wide report, it has to be floated to the cities for response. But other than that, there's really nothing that requires the county to go to the city. For example, there was recently a proposed line, opponent to find one of the remaining contributors, Wayne Rosen, for $5 million for a supply infrastructure development project, which was a parking garage associated with a charter school in Palmetto Bay. It had not been the official policy of Palmetto Bay to request that $5 million seed, this was coming out of a specialized designated pop of economic development funds. So I think it's really critical, not just to incorporation, but in other relations between the cities and the counties, that we have a full review of how to honor the wishes of our cities as they move forward. The old existing ones, maybe it might as well, Homestead has a great history, but the newer ones as well as the well-established ones.
What would be your strategy to establish the new home of Dade County Youth Fair in Deep South Dade?
Wouldn't it be great? If we have Dade, Deep South Dade, and many have wondered about that, and it seems to me it would be an ideal location. So basically, FYU would like to expand, and there seems to be demand to allow them to do it on a contiguous property. Of course, FYU is one of the outstanding institutions in our community, and one that doesn't just produce great graduates, but graduates that stay home and make Miami-Dade County a better place. So FYU, you know, hats off to FYU, they're great growth. On the other hand, the youth fair is another great institution that needs to be supported. And plans have been floated for possibly including a tropical park, that would be a sacrifice to public space, which is a premium here in Miami-Dade County. And we do have land that's in South Dade. I'm not a forerunner, if there's a particular parcel that's been offered, or if there's particularly advocacy, but I certainly would welcome pursuing it, and I think it would be a great example of the county to promote in South Dade.
Thank you. I have plenty of time, so I'm going to take a minute to refute something that was stated earlier. There was no special deal for one of my special contributors, that's false. That was dollars that were allocated by the mayor's office. The mayor has basically dollars that he has applied the money to that goes for development, development dollars. The only reason my name was on it is a sponsor, is because I'm the commissioner of the district. It was at the request of the town of Palmetto Bay. The town of Palmetto Bay's councilman stood up and spoke to it and was furious because a particular mayor of another town stood up and said that nobody is, that council's supporting this.
Ms. Bell, you need to answer this question.
Thank you. The youth fair has a lease till 2085. Now, at the last commission meeting, when we had this discussion on to put the ballot makers out, I wore two lapels, I mean, I wore two pins on my lapel. And on my left lapel, I wore an FYU pin, and on my right lapel, I wore my Dade County spirit pin. Because why? We have two great institutions in Miami-Dade County, we have more than two, but this is two of them. And the youth fair is a tradition, as is, FYU is a wonderful school of higher education, a wonderful institution. But there's a lot to be done. They have a lease, they have a pretty airtight lease that goes until 2085. Now, the youth fair doesn't want to come to South Dade because I have already entertained that with them, and they're going to be the job to see. Well, I was able to say, "Listen, if we can get the biggest race in the entire country in Homestead every single year and pack it out and get the traffic in and out very efficiently, we can certainly host the youth fair in South Dade." So you can be assured that I would keep pushing that, and I think that we would be a wonderful venue for that. But I don't think the youth fair wants to go anywhere, so I support both institutions. And I have to tell you, I truly hope we can come to an amicable decision that will benefit both as well as the community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Question number eight is two minutes, and this is an opportunity for each of you to ask the other question. Ms. Bell, would you like to ask Ms. Levine Cava a question?
Yes, I would. I'm sure nobody's surprised. You know, I've heard a lot about care and concern and serving a community for 31 years. I don't know, I never heard of Ms. Levine until, I'm living here for 35 years, and I never heard the name before, and including my entire community, and I'm going to teach mom to soccer mom. Now, if you really think that you have the qualifications to serve, why don't you serve where you live? That's a fair question. Why don't you serve where you live?
Miami-Dade County is a great community and is one that has interests across the whole county, which is several parts of Miami-Dade County, including I am with Palmetto Bay. I've had an opportunity to serve throughout this county, including many years of service I've served, I haven't had a chance to get to know each other before this. Many in the room know me. If you know me, would you please raise your hand? Those are people who know my history of service, and I've always worked behind the scenes, Ms. Bell. I am not a person who draws attention to myself, I'm not a person who looks for photo opportunities. I've always been a person who brings people together collaboratively for collective benefit. So for example, We Care, I didn't stand up and take credit for We Care. We Care was a collaborative effort of many organizations, but when it wanted to move beyond volunteer status and start to raise dollars so it could provide concrete services, my organization was a physical sponsor that had lab to do that, providing technical assistance. We have a staff, we, Catalyst Miami, which I led for eight years in December, has a staff person assigned by Catalyst Miami to help at Old Door Clinic, where so many people who can't afford and can't qualify for healthcare services in other places go regularly to access quality healthcare. The Catalyst Miami staff member has been working there quietly in her circles among those who are uninsured and undocumented, many of them. She's known as the Raina of Homestead. She is a person who has dedicated her life and who found her, and she is a true champion, and that's how Catalyst worked in a quiet way. When Baptists wanted to go about letting people know about our new healthcare insurance, they reached out to Catalyst Miami to help let people know. And actually, our first office in South Dade of Catalyst Miami was at the James Rogers Hospital, it was donated by the activist team, because they made a great contribution.
Ms. Levine Cava, would you like to ask Ms. Bell a question?
I would really like to know why you thought it necessary to tear down my history of service with a despicable album that made up a false premise about my salary, which is a fine print, and you have to stop the screening to see that it's 10 years of my salary by $100,000. Why did you feel the necessity to wear that kind of album in this race when you were the first to throw a name in?
Thank you. And thank you for the question, I'm happy to answer that. By the way, you didn't answer my question that I asked earlier about why do you live, you didn't answer my question.
I live in Palmetto Bay, that's where I'm running.
Two minutes.
Thank you. You know, it's interesting because when we were sitting at the mic, I remember you had stated, and I had talked to you about some of your ads that were coming out, you said, "I can't be held responsible for third-party communications." So Ms. Levine, I can't be held responsible for third-party communications. That's not mine, and that according to me. But this is coming from the person who puts out thinsets that I tried to poison children, who put out from her own name that I voted to raise transit fees, where that no such vote ever took place. I voted to raise fees on the disabled, no such vote ever took place. She said, "I voted to give a multimillion dollar contract to somebody, no such vote ever took place." Over, Ms. Levine, you can't lie your way to this office. You can't move your way, you can't change your name in here, and you can't lie your way to this office. And let me tell you, the poisoning the children, a little over the top. Trying to sabotage my food distribution, a little over the top. Then you put out a YouTube ad with some woman named Queen something or other, who's mocking our Thanksgiving food giveaway as a $10 turkey distribution. What a shame that you think that it's okay to mock the poor that we serve in this district. What a shame. You know what? Every year, when we have established this tradition of a Thanksgiving food giveaway, I'm so proud that we're able to serve families. And then even in the video, it says, "Oh, and I've seen some people there more than once." Well, God forbid they should do twice. And so, you know, I'm just... So when you, you know when they say, "Those who flip the glass houses can't throw a spell?" Ms. Levine, I have seen the most negative and nasty advertising coming from you, and what's amazing is I can, I'm used to 50% true, 50% lie, oh, no, it's 100% lying, 100% lying, 100% lying. You can't sit there and ask me a question on an ad that I did not do, and I would...
Time, time. We're going to shift to four questions which came from the audience and have been selected by the Rotary Committee.
I love the Rotary.
On the first question, Ms., they're all going to be two-minute questions. Ms. Levine Cava followed by Ms. Bell. What is your position on the raising of taxes in an informal fashion over the next four years?
I know that we're suffering in this community. We have the most unequal income level in the country. We have the richest and we have the poorest. So the people that used to be in the middle class are religious and in mind. And so, people can't afford to put up more, they're all suffering, including our county workers, many of them. Because even though a few do make over $100,000, that's less, you know, we have 25,000 plus employees, that's 2,000 of them. So there's many, many who have received pay raises in the early, at the bottom of the economic ladder. So I know that the people can't afford anything extra, including new taxes. So my first order of business will be to look very closely at some of these other matters that we talked about. The cost of procurement, the, whether you call them discretionary, not dollars in the county commission budget that don't need to be used for perks. The trips to Malaysia for jackets for things that end up with a development like boat rides to the Bahamas and don't create jobs in South Florida, just allow casinos to go forward in the Bahamas. And moving our county offices to the private sector when there's free offices at South Dade Government Center. So those are a few of the things that I would look to. The only exception that might be considered is when people specifically wrote to approve something, such as they did with this trust, and that was an example of a violation of a trust. When people said, especially in this part of the district, in this part of the county, we have such a huge problem of federal animals, stray animals, and people were willing, they wanted to create a no-kill shelter and not just sustain the programs that would get the job done, but a massive effort, a non-familiar law, a non-forum that we were able to scrape together because of the savings from another county. We need a long-term strategy, and I would work within our means with the county administration.
I never heard, I never heard I'm not raising taxes. I didn't hear the answer. Are you, are you saying I will not raise taxes? Because I didn't hear that. Because I said it. I said, I'm not afraid to say it. Let me tell you, again, trips to Malaysia? I didn't take a trip to Malaysia. You're going to do it. Please get your facts correct. I took a trip to Hong Kong and Singapore and brought back a $70 million contract over the next 10 years on the bill and super fast. And I assure you, you might be trying to... Again, Ms. Levine, Kava, please, if you're going to say these things, try to be a little bit correct. And, you know, when we talk about raising taxes, no, this is a tough economy. You know, you can't be supported by all the unions you're being supported of without making those promises. I know it because I have their screenings. I know it. I know what the truth is. And I know that you promised them to do all these restorations and supplemental pays. And I'm sitting here looking at this, my friends, I'm looking. And let me tell you, again, I said, and I love our employees, but this is not sane. 120.3% increase to police officers. Clerk two, this is across the board of all the units. 74% pay increases in the last decade. Firefighters, 84% increase. Bus operators, bus drivers, 80% increase in the last decade. Administering secretaries, 81.6%. So it's not just the 2121 that we're talking about. We're talking about, and this is including, this is just base pay, my friends. This doesn't even include the supplementals, the flex pay, the premium pay, the holiday premium pay. We pay first responders, extra pay for being first responders. The City Home Center doesn't pay excuse officers like that. I'm going to tell you something, it's not sustainable. We have, the waste truck drivers, I got 64.1% increase. Airport maintenance mechanics, 73.1% decrease over the last decade. This is not sustainable. This is the reality. When you talk about the Prince Trust, let me tell you something. We had the firefighters that wanted a bill to increase. Firefighters that wanted a bill to increase. Police wanted a tax increase. Then the pets wanted a tax increase. So what did we do? We put $4 million additional last year and $4 million additional this year. We love our pets. Thank you.
Okay, our next question will be answered first by Ms. Bell and second by Ms. Levine, Kava. What vision do you have for moving Miami Dade County toward environmental sustainability? Ms. Bell?
Thank you. This has been one of the most forward and proactive counties when it comes to environmental sustainability. I mean, we do so many programs when it comes to saving your water. We just did, we did our food distribution that they tried to sabotage last week. We gave out free light bulbs. We gave out showerheads. We're constantly doing things. And you know what? I brought single stream recycling when I was here in Homestead and I'm proud of that, single stream recycling. Parks, improving on our parks. But we have a county that's been so forward and so proactive. We also passed legislation, we passed legislation that you have to have a super majority to even talk about, to vote on moving the urban development boundary line. That's how important it is. But this county has been so proactive on the green front. And let me tell you something, I'm with green with, green with's just a color. That's what it is. It's just, it's a lifestyle. You know, we weren't called green, then we were just called common sense conservationists. It's just about doing the right thing, turning your water off. But this county has been so proactive when it comes to that and I'm very proud of the structural accomplishments. Thank you.
I think we have our hands in sand in this county when it comes to environmental protection. We're building bridges. Downtown Miami, it's unsustainable. We don't have the fresh water. Our aquifer can't sustain it. We already have the major flooding in Miami Beach and it's coming to downtown soon. We need to be planning intelligently for the future of this new climate reality. And that includes protecting our urban development boundary line forcefully. And it also includes putting some real money into planning. Because we have, we are part of a regional compact, but we're not moving forward on our Bahamas plans. We have a very tiny Office of Sustainability. We lost some of our best people to Broward. Broward is very forward thinking. They have all kinds of incentives for people that we don't have in Miami Dade County. We're not promoting solar actively. We're not, you know, we did save water, that was a good thing, but we can do so much more in saving energy. So we need to really be aggressive about that. And I was honored with the endorsement of Sierra Club Clean Water Action and the Transportation Committee, all of which we believe, know that I'm deeply committed to bringing that perspective and that voice. As I said in our last debate, you know, taking an area around the other place is not the same as focusing on the future of our environmental challenges here in Miami Dade County. And we need to be sure that we protect our agricultural industry. There are solutions that we are perhaps not looking at, such as raising up some of the farmland so that it withstands some of the natural flooding and to follow the mandates of the EPA and the plans that have been developed and agreed to. But we need to move forward.
Yeah, third question from the audience is going to be answered by Ms. Bell. You want me to repeat it? Oh wait, I had an answer. It's a long, it's a long, I read it several times, but not for you. Ms. Levine, Kava, will answer first, followed by Ms. Bell. It's no secret that many in the downtown power structure view our area as, quote, "just Homestead" and have no problem placing a high proportion of affordable rental projects in Homestead. Do you support further concentration and expansion of these projects and with low interest rates, why does or should government expand the footprint of subsidized housing?
You know, my expertise for many years is in reducing poverty. So giving away turkeys is not the way to reduce poverty. That's why I was so pleased when my close friend, Lenny Brown, said that the people that I work with are in a position after working with me to actually be able to give away turkeys. Obviously, people do need times, they need a handout, there's no question about it. But we need to be constantly focusing on how we can help them move ahead so they can be more self-sufficient. And that's what I've done my entire life. So the problem with concentration of affordable housing is it boosts people in poverty. The best anti-poverty strategy is the deconcentration of poverty. So the way we have to do that is to create mixed income communities that lifts up the educational level, that lifts up the quality of our communities, our recreational opportunities and the like. So no community should be a dumping ground. Every community needs some measure of housing that's more affordable for people who are on the up and up and people who are basically on a fixed income. So I think it's wonderful, for example, that Ms. Bell was able to create, as all county commissioners do, some affordable housing in the district. That's just part of the job of the county commissioner to support the use of county dollars for those types of programs. But there should not be a concentration of poverty in any area. It's not good for the residents and it's not good for the community.
Let me tell you, I believe what was you're talking about, whoever asked that question, really good questions. What happened to us after Hurricane Andrew? And we truly were, we really were ground zero because as soon as we were able to build them, everybody was sold for $1,000 and it was throwing to Homestead, throwing to Homestead. And I'll never forget, one time I was downtown, in fact, I was down, going downtown on behalf of Florida City. They asked me to go and speak on behalf of an annexation that they have support of. So I was standing there and there was somebody that was standing in front of me in line and we were talking, the councilman and I, Florida City, we're talking. And I mentioned Homestead, you mentioned Florida City, and they turned around and said, "Oh, Homestead, Florida City, I need to speak with you. I've got some affordable housing I'd like to put in your city." So I said, "Where do you live?" "Oh, I live in Pikecrest." I said, "Put it in Pikecrest." That was my exact answers. Listen, we need to make sure that we reach out to every single socioeconomic strata that's out there. There are times, and affordable housing, by the way, is changing. It is changing. The face of affordable housing is called workforce housing and it is changing. In fact, we just had a rapid cutting of affordable housing, workforce housing in New Orleans. And let me tell you, they were beautiful. And it looked like they could be, this housing, 100 units, looks like it could be picked up and put on South Beach. It was so pretty. I mean, I think I would be proud if Friday tomorrow I lived there. It was so pretty. And it improves the area, improved the area so beautifully. And we're also doing a form of that in Pompano Bay that I'm very proud of and it's for senior citizens. So there is a balance, my friends. Everything has to be a balance. You have to have the right combination of workforce slash affordable, but you can't saturate or inundate any one area with too much of that. And that's what your commissioner is there for, to make sure that that doesn't happen.
Our last question is a very complicated one.
I'm not surprised.
Ms. Levine, Kava will answer first, Ms. Bell second. I'm not sure I understand the question. It deals with land and water conservation, protecting and preserving agricultural land in the CDMP. There's a policy to protect and preserve agricultural lands, but there's no way to enforce it. We have witnessed great losses of our much needed farmland development via zoning changes that are reduced to a small, so the farmland is reduced to a small concentrated area with our banks in the Everglades. And even though farming is related to enemies, our multimillion dollar business with extensive revenue to the county, by wiping us out would equate to zero farms and zero food. How do you propose to solve this problem?
I think what they're talking about, I'm trying to guess where this question is coming from. There has been a bit of a war, if you will, on farmland, on agricultural land. And I've been really fighting hard to protect that. And we were referring to the CDMP and they were shrinking farmland. In fact, there was just, just about six or seven months ago, at the CDMP, when we're having zoning in the CDMP, there was legislation that, that was being brought by the county that would have actually, for the Future Land Use, Future Land Usarium Act, that would have actually taken this out. And that was, it would have affected the outskirts and it would have affected the Miami Dade's farming property. And I said, "How can you, how can you be affecting them?" Well, because it was outside their development boundary line, but it's farming community, it's for farming. So how can you, how can you harm the farmers that way? Whether it's, whether it's street farming or whether it's grow crops, corn, whatever. And so I was able to fight for and able to, able to, and get all my, Commissioner Moss and join me very quickly. We were able to fight and make sure that that particular agricultural land that we were referring to would affect these two particular farmers. We were able to preserve that property. And let me tell you, there has been a bit of a war in agriculture. Let me tell you, we had a bit of a war with the environmental community and the farming community that I thought was a bit bizarre because I had legislation that would completely fund the long water C-11, C-11 canal project. And that was to completely refund, to completely fund it, which they should have been rejoicing and been on my side. But because I put language in it that said, because of some of the actions, the flooding was causing the crops to be flooded out and destroyed. And let me tell you something, Mr. Damari experienced losses of millions because of that flooding. And that's part of the reason why the environmentalists have supported my opponent, because I've been such a proponent of agriculture. Why can't we coexist? The best environmentalists I know are the farmers because their sustenance comes from the land. So why can't we coexist? And you know, um...
Now, Ms. Levine, Kava.
The solution to dealing with the struggles, those trying to make a living in agriculture and those trying to make sure that we maintain our water supply and our integrity of our lands. And I certainly agree that those in the farming sector are among our strongest lovers of the land and people who want to maintain integrity of that. But there is right now a divide very often because there's a lack of trust, because there's been so much posturing and there's really not been an intent to bring people together to develop a sensible plan, bringing all those interests to the fore. And that's the kind of work that I specialize in, bringing people together, finding out what are the common areas of concern, what are the ways that we can seek, when bringing solutions like I've been doing on my way. Specifically, there's a real danger to the agricultural sector overall as we allow farming to be taken out of circulation. There's a certain number of areas that have to be under cultivation to be able to maintain the infrastructure for a healthy farming sector. Many are looking to cash out and there's been a successful effort at helping to buy the development rights. And as I understand it, if there were more dollars to maintain farmers in agriculture, even during difficult economic times, that many other farmers would agree to that. And that would be something that the county could take out aggressively to try to maintain and assure the unique nature of this farming sector. You know, it's not just charming and points, right? It's really our survival. Low labor produce is something that is now, you know, I think it has interest. How foolish would it be if we don't aggressively invest in making sure that our agricultural sector stays vibrant, productive and evenly viable? Homestead is such a unique, special place at the southern end of the county, but in so many ways, the finest part of the county. Special history, strong civic activism, which is of course very dear to my heart, it's my life's work, strong sense of community. And I have to say also, we're very welcoming. So while I've spent many, many wonderful times in Homestead, it's during this campaign that I've been able to really spend so much time attending the clubs and the meetings. I've joined the chamber and so on. And it's been just a special, special privilege to get to know people, many more people, as I've already explained, but many more people. And this evening, to feel really welcomed and a sense now that they're looking forward to what I can bring. And what I can bring is real integrity to government. There's a sense that the overall operations of county government are suspect, that they're dictated by the interests of the few, the people that want something from the county. Because most people will check out of caring about county government because they don't see it doing anything for them. So it's those that have the money, who have deals that they want to bring, they are the ones that are propping up the county government right now, at least at the commission level. And that diminishes confidence of everyone. So the first thing that I will work on is to diminish that influence of special interest money, to restore a sense of confidence. And my opponent unfortunately represents the opposite. Maybe that wasn't her plan when she went into county government, but she has a history of self-dealing for her family, for her friends, and that is in contradistinction to really investing in making a major difference. Job growth has not been significant. Business development has not been significant. Constituent services have not been significant, and this is what I hear every day walking door to door in this district. So it will be my extreme pleasure and honor to serve, to work collaboratively with all the commissioners and with all the residents of South Dade, to restore confidence in government, to put people back in a leadership role, to create a more participatory form of government and to be with you every day, not just on the county trail, but throughout my tenure in this mission. Thank you.
I find it interesting that my opponent can't even dare say the appearance of special interests with her, she's completely funded by special interests. The biggest special interests in this county are the unions, the nine bargaining years. And they are pumping, we've counted by $100,000 so far from union money to put into ECOs and PACs to my opponent to do commercials on radio. So you can't, you can't say that because it's just not true. And you know what? It's funny because my opponent mentioned lobbyists driving up the cost. What? How does a lobbyist drive up the cost? The only person that drives the cost was their client. That's nothing to do with county procurement whatsoever. You have to understand procurement to before you can make a statement like that. Lobbyists drive up the cost for their, for whomever their client is, but not for the county. The biggest, the biggest driver of county dollars is the salaries that we pay. It's what comes out of your pocket, my friends. That's what, that's the biggest driver. And, and that, you know, $116 million right now of concessions are due to kickback, a total of $250 million. We could close a bus hold tomorrow if it wasn't for the junior concessions. Tomorrow. Now, let me just say this. I live a whole two or three minutes away from here. I probably didn't put roller skates on and got here very quickly. I'm so happy to be here. I'm proud to live right here in the city of Homestead for 35 years. I raised three daughters here. I have nine grandchildren and seven of them who live right here in this town. And by the way, we're about to be granddad of two more times. And we definitely believe in being fruitful and multiplying in this family. And so we're about to be granddad of two more times and I'm very proud of that. And I'm very proud of my, whether I was a PTA mom and then a soccer mom and then serving on city council and vice mayor and mayor, I'm so proud that I have cared enough to continue to serve and get beat up for doing the right thing and get beat up for taking a stand for doing the right thing. And I will continue to fight for everybody here. I have the most open and accessible office that you could possibly have. And I hear it every single day. You know, there's people in this audience right now and we fix problems for them. I'm not even a school board member. And when someone was having a problem with their grandson, I made sure, he's autistic and I made sure he got the best attention that he's getting today. And she's sitting in this audience. There are many other people that you called me because you've had problems with zoning, you've had problems with public enforcement, you've had problems and I fixed your problems. There's a gentleman back there, he just waved because I fixed a problem for him in agriculture, where the county was ready to shut him down on something ridiculous. And I fixed a problem, Commissioner Moss and I with a piece of legislation. And that's what I do every single day. And when I get back there on August 26th, I'm going to keep fighting for everyone in this audience.[1783.12] this audience. And guess what I'm going to fight for, those of you who vote for me and fight for those of you who don't vote for me. And I know many of you here tonight, most of you, a lot of you don't live in the district, but please do feel free to vote in because my opponent's serving here.
Thank you all very much for attending this Rotary function this evening. The debate has been videotaped and will appear on the South Day News Leader website, will be uploaded overnight and should be available tomorrow afternoon. Steve, would you please ring the bell to end the Rotary function?
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.